All right, so that's now before, or sort of as a comprehensive item. Is there a motion to approve those resolutions?
I make the motion to approve the resolution.
Bless you. Is there a second?
Support Carrington.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by President Pro Tem Carrington. So we now have a motion before us on these four items. For the sake of clarity, how about administration handle them in the corresponding order and separately as they are?
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and I'm gonna allow Deputy Mayor Stevens to get into the details. I'll just note that Resolution seven, eight, and nine involve, as we discussed fairly extensively earlier, efforts to make sure that the budget reflects overspending, most of which already occurred and went out the door. In some cases, services that were provided but not paid for under the previous administration. And we want to make sure that we're accurately reflecting all of that in the budget. The provisions regarding attorney fees simply increase the budget, not just to accommodate past expenses incurred and spent, but also to allow us to continue to pay for legal services moving forward through the rest of this fiscal year as well, so we don't have to come back for additional ability to do that. Number six, however, is a fundamentally different item in that it is not due to excessive spending under the previous administration, but perhaps, if anything, underspending in that the, there have been a number of court rulings that have shown that the city is in fact obligated to pay for sick and vacation time upon police and fire folks retiring and reaching retirement age. We obviously don't currently have any active police or fire employees working for the city currently, but we do have a number of former police and fire employees, who, some of whom have not yet reached retirement age. And when they reach retirement age, the city is obligated to pay out the sick and vacation time that they accrued during their time as active employees here at the city. And previously, the city apparently contested that. The city repeatedly lost its efforts to contest that. There's really no legal question that police and fire retirees are entitled to this pay. And we want to make sure that we're budgeting accordingly so that the city is in fact paying those who literally risk their lives serving the city, the sick and vacation pay that they're entitled upon reaching retirement age. And that's what item number six is designed to do. And with that, I'm sorry, I probably said quite a bit, Deputy Mayor, for saying I'm gonna allow you to get into the details, but I did just want to clarify that item six is a little bit different from the other items.
The mayor said everything that needs to be said on item six, with the exception of the fact that this is a budget amendment for this year, but we do just want to bring it to your attention that we will be budgeting this for the next couple of years just to make sure that we do have adequate funds each year to deal with the, as people age into being able to claim that, those funds.
And this is worth noting, this is really just authorizing the clerk to publish the notice so we can start the process rolling. Clerk Doyle, do you want to elaborate any further? So we're not voting tonight on yea or nay for, are we gonna amend the budget? It's really just sort of getting that going. Do you want to elaborate on that?
Thank you, Mr. President. That is correct. The charter requires before a budget amendment is made that I have to post, a notice has to be posted in the newspaper. And it has to be posted at least one week before council takes action. So actually, these items won't come back before the council until two weeks from today for you to officially take action. Thank you.
Understood. Any discussion before we vote on the, well, yeah, let's go back to the meat of it. Is there anything further that the administration would like to? Any questions? How about this, on that settlement payments for sick time payouts? Anyone want to clarify that further? All right, with that, the administration would like to elaborate. That item was resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of a proposed budget amendment for fiscal year 2021, '22 to allocate a total of $100,000 for that account for settlement payments for sick time payouts. So that's one of the four that we're talking about. Moving on to the next, we're now looking at resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of a proposed budget amendment to transfer $72,000 from the general fund balance GL account to the general fund account for city events. Would the administration like to elaborate for the council and community what gives with the $72,000 specifically?
This is in regard to city events. And in the current fiscal year budget that was approved by the previous city council, the previous city council budgeted $30,000 for city events. That included budget for the previous mayor's State of the City address, which was given back in July, I believe, roughly. The previous administration incurred a total of $102,000 for city event expenses, including $46,000 to do what she termed an additional State of the City address in December, which I don't think had ever been done before by any mayor. And certainly, other mayors had not done two State of the City addresses in the same year. So $46,000 of that expense was associated with her quote "State of the City" address, end quote, in December. Twenty-some thousand dollars of that was for renting out the facility at M1 Concourse. In addition, there were expenses for a variety of other events, including a concert just a few days before the primary election in very late July or very early August that cost a substantial amount of money and at which the previous mayor was a featured speaker. And there were a number of other miscellaneous expenses, all of which have been detailed in information provided to city council and which should be available online as well if the public's interested. And Deputy Mayor, did I miss anything?
No, you did not miss anything. In the memo that was sent to you, there were, one, two, three, four separate events totaling $55,821.26. And then the mayor already stated that the State of the City, the winter December State of the City expenses were approximately $45,437.63. And so those amounts add up to the $72,000 that we're asking to put the budget back into balance.
On the city events portion, Councilman Rutherford?
So, the eight twenty, 2021, that's John Witz Entertainment Management, Event Management, correct? JTW? And that was do, that was through, that was before we did our, what is the word?
Dream Cruise?
Yes. That was not Dream Cruise. That was actually used as an event for voting or for people, for people to come to a concert before we had our primary, correct?
I believe John Witz was involved in a few different events. I think there was one around Dream Cruise or around the drag racing nights. But I think there was, I think he was also involved in the substantial expense that was allocated for this concert right before the primary on what was formerly known as Lot Night.
So, I just want to make sure I got this right. This was an event for the primary that is being billed towards us? Or I'm just trying to understand this?
I don't think it was officially billed as an event that was election-related. However, I'll note that the timing was immediately before the primary election. And the speaker spoke about the mayor being up for reelection at the event, among other things. And so there is, I think, a very important question to be had about whether city funds were misused and abused for election purposes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to get clear to. Thank you.
Councilman Goodman, then Councilman Nicholson?
So, just to put some things out there in plain fact, just based off the information that we have. So, re-clarify for me, what is the amount that the 10th council allocated for the mayor's State of the City address, the original one?
The allocation in total for city events was $30,000. I'm not sure offhand if that was broken down by event or not. It may be that the previous city council allocated that entire $30,000 specifically for the State of the City address itself. And ultimately, a total, this, again, this is just through the end of December. Not, we haven't, we haven't spent any money on any city events this, this calendar year. But the former mayor herself spent a total of $102,000 in the course of six months, when the total budget for 12 months was only $30,000.
So, what I also want to bring into that is just the, again, I think everyone here knows how basic math and budgeting works. So if the 10th council had allocated $30,000 for the entirety of the year, explain to me why in a good fiduciary mindset, that why the previous administration would spend $23,000 on the rental of a singular facility for one night for a singular event in which not many people attended? So I, I want to have an understanding, well, which I won't get because someone's not here anymore, of the, of the mindset of spending almost an entirety of the city's budget for city events on a singular event, not including the musical festival that you talked about that costs almost $21,000, Power Week, which costs almost $19,000. I don't understand the mindset that someone can have when you see a number that is $30,000 and then decide, you know what, let me go over that dramatically. Because I don't think anyone in this room who has ever had to pay bills and run a checking account has ever had that mindset before.
Well, they might, but they'd be bankrupt. Councilman Nicholson, then Councilman Rutherford?
When I look through the expense report, there's some things that are really clear about what they are. I'm not gonna name names of particular providers. What does personal services mean? Do we know? Is that a stylist? Is that a? There's gift bags, there's key, you know, the making of the key to the city, there's a DJ, but then there's this sort of personal services.
It's a little unclear to me, and Deputy Mayor Stevens, do you have any insight into this? Or perhaps Mr. Carrington can shed some light on to it, but I defer to you, Deputy Mayor, if you have some insights into the specifics. And I know it was difficult for us to ascertain some of these.
Yeah, it was actually very difficult to ascertain these. I did not pull the specific invoices that go along with that. Mr. Carrington, do you happen to have those invoices and know what they are?
Don't come all the way up to the podium if you're just gonna say no.
I don't have the invoices, but when we refer to personnel, personal services, we're talking about an individual who's working and getting compensated for their.
Personnel, not personal.
Personal, personal, a personal services contract. So which one were you referring to, Councilman?
Yeah, under services on the State of the City expense report, there's an item for $5,000 marked personal services.
Yeah, so that.
Is there elaboration on what that means?
That, and I don't, again, I don't have that particular invoice, but just going off memory, it was a personal services contract for an individual who was working in terms of the planning and organizing of the State of the City event.
Okay.
Okay, so, De'Andre Johnson is a singer, right? Do you see the item on, it's the seven to 2021? She's a singer. That was an elected event. That was an event for people to actually go. So why are we paying for that part? Because that was actually billed as a voting event. It was a voting engagement event. It was a gospel series. So why are we paying for that?
I believe that the city already paid for that. So I don't believe that those expenditures have yet to be made. So the question shouldn't be, why are we paying for it, but why did the city pay for it? And I don't have a good answer to that because the city should have never paid for it.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to know because I was there and I just didn't understand. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Goodman?
So, another question that I have. So, and this is not to come off negatively. Who compiled the information that we have in front of you? Like, I guess, to the amount of detail that these are printed out with, was this you filling in what little information you have and giving us an idea of what the expenditure was?
So this was myself working with the finance department to say, hey, where did we spend money that was not approved? Where did we spend money that brought us over our lines and our limits? And so we went through, and that's why I said, some, some of the invoices I actually pulled, I'm not an auditor, but some of the invoices I pulled and looked at. Some of the invoices was just like, okay, that's one more invoice on top of this, in this category, and now we have these numbers.
So the only thing that I want to bring up is just, and again, I think I speak for everyone up here. When all of us ran for office and we had to turn in campaign finance reports, there was a lot more detail required than I'm assuming that the administration was given. Is that, is that a correct statement?
On these?
Yes.
You're saying the previous administration, at the time this, these expenses were incurred or paid?
So let me clarify, put it a little closer. Based on the information that was provided, found, guessed work from, that was left by the previous administration that you have come into to then compile what we have before us and the information about, you know, swag item, keys to the city, was that information readily available and a decent amount?
Like waiting for you in a, hey, this is.
In a box that may or may not be in a uniform truck?
No, sir, no.
So, so the issues that I have with that is the fact that, again, for almost everyone on this side of the audience, when we have to complete campaign finance reports, there is a large more amount of detail that is required for us to fill out things with the county. So the fact that, again, the previous administration is able to just make expenditures and kind of give high school fundraiser level responses to what's being spent, this is a problem. And again, this just highlights the reason of why we need forensic audit and why we need to look at these expenditures. Because again, I am worried that if, you know, most of our records and line items say, oh, swag items, cool, what is that? You know, when we see professional services, yes, we can have an idea of what that means. But like, from a governmental standpoint, from the perspective of someone who gets paid thousands, over $100,000 a year, to then compile this, which is what you have been left with, to me, that is a problem. And that is a glaring problem.
Agreed.
Councilman Rutherford, I've already recognized you twice, and I'm only allowed to do up to two times. Who would like to speak for a first time? And remember, this is actually pre-lax because this is really one motion, but we're going. And we're sort of on the, the events. Does anyone else want to speak on the events for a first time? Carrington?
Just a quick question. Just a quick question. You guys said you did get invoices, so the invoices actually explain some of the services that that particular vendor was offering to the city, all right?
We can go back and pull more invoices, specific invoices.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wish to be recognized? Councilman Nicholson for a second and final time.
So I noticed also at the State of the City, there's a video. Do we have this video? I, is, I mean, these are, this, a lot of this stuff is still property, right? I mean, it seems like we should be able to, if we were paying for a video, we should be able to at least receive these things to use for further.
I believe it is in the city's possession. We were actually just talking about this video the other day. I have not personally watched it, but it does exist. We're happy to share it with anyone who's interested in seeing it. I would not characterize it as a prudent use of city financial resources to pay somebody to produce the video, but it was done by the previous administration.
The, the process by which someone becomes a vendor, was there an approved vendor process or contracting process? I mean, I see a lot of, you know, familiar names and companies, but I'm wondering, you know, for some of these things, is there a bid process for a certain amount, a dollar amount? Or is it, is there a process or a form at least that you fill out to become a vendor?
Yeah, so generally speaking, items up under $10,000 are treated in a different manner. Or, you know, items above $10,000 generally would require a bid or some type of estimates and the like, you know, it's a more formal process. So many of these expenses were below that threshold. We, again, generally, we're required to follow the purchasing policy in terms of the selection of vendors and how those contracts are let out with, with each individual vendor.
Yeah, but to underscore your point, Councilman, although city ordinance allows the executive branch to contract for goods or services in amounts less than $10,000 without an RFP process or without going before council, our administration has sought to come to council and be transparent about expenditures, even when they're less than that amount. But, but more importantly, some of these items that we're talking about were in excess of $10,000. And the previous administration violated city ordinance by not going through an RFP process and by not coming before council. In fact, in a couple of instances, the previous administration not only didn't come before council to seek approval of expenditures, but the previous council actually passed resolutions prohibiting those expenditures, and the previous administration spent the money anyway.
Reminds me of this process where we're tightening up with this ordinance, right? Where we say, we pull, we pull a contract to replace a power, you know, power panel, and then we pull a contract to do the roof, and, you know, all these little things add up to $72,000, you know, where we, even when we give that, you know, the full budget is what was the biggest picture for some of these events. And, you know, that $10,000, you know, process is, is great, but to me, I think there should also be some thought too when there, when each one of these items, that may be a budget in total, which I appreciate that transparency. I'm sure we'll see things like that regarding events like this in the future. Thank you.
Councilwoman James?
Yes, I have a question on, on Resolution eight. You could help me to understand.
We aren't there just yet.
You're doing, dealing with each one?
Kind of subdividing it, yep.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll call you first for eight. So with grace, Rutherford, then Goodman, for quick final items on that, city events.
You signed off on this?
On these, on the State of the City?
You signed off on this? It's, I, hold on. Did you sign off on this?
Ultimately, my authorities needed to cut, cut any of these checks. I didn't, I, and I don't want to get into details of private conversations, but myself, along with other people in the administration, expressed the fact that we did not believe that these expenses were allowable under the city's, a number of the city's policies.
I'm gonna ask it another way. For the $55,821.26, my question is very simple. Did you sign off on this?
Well, we, we had, we had, we had two, we got two different items here. So, so, so one is, one is talking about the $55,000 is, is the events that were done, done leading up to this State of the City. And so at the time, the city had $30,000, the administration had $30,000 that could be spent. So for, for all of these items, they go through the finance department. Part of, part of my responsibility is authorizing those expenditures. But when we, and specifically talking about the State of the City, did I individually review in detail and authorize and sign off on those? That, that would not be, be an accurate statement. You know, we process a number of things. We have a process in place. We review them. I'm not, you know, with anything, I'm not intimately familiar with everything. We have department heads that, that provide some closer scrutiny of when these expenses are incurred. But I'm not at all trying to absolve myself of the responsibility that I have, had then and I have now. So, you know, in answering your question, the ultimate responsibility certainly, certainly lies with me. But from a process standpoint, I did, many of these events I did not attend, was not, you know, completely aware of all the, the details surrounding each of the events and the expenses that were incurred.
Mayor Grimald, I'd like to elaborate on your question as well, Councilman.
I think it's important that we be straight and direct with the public. And the fact is, Mr. Carrington did in fact sign off on a number of these expenses. And I don't want misinformation to be given at a public meeting without it being corrected, which is why I feel obliged to chime in. The truth of the matter is that Mr. Carrington did in fact sign off on a number of these items. What he's driving at is that the previous administration, in many cases, ordered him to and directed him to. But he did in fact sign off on these items.
And I, and as I, I want to be clear, I'm, I'm responsible for signing, ultimately signing off on all of those. I, I don't want to leave any, any misconception.
Order please in the chamber so that way tho, those who are recognized with the floor. Anything further, Mr. Carrington? With that, Councilman Goodman?
So one last question, this is just me splitting hairs. So looking at the State of the City expense report, there are a couple blank spaces where there would typically be a dollar amount. Specifically, an entertainment where it says Markley Master of Ceremonies and the plastic bag slash sanitizer face mask swag bag. Is the amount missing because we don't know the amount? Were they paid by someone else or were the services rendered for free?
I don't, so I'm, I'm looking at the plastic bag sanitizer face mask, swag bag item, and then the, the blank. I will have to get back to you on that specific. I believe that that is actually a play saver from when we were putting the list together.
Okay, and then.
But I will, I will get back to you with a specific.
And then also check into the, the first one, the, the master ceremonies, if there, if the service was rendered for free or if there is an amount?
Yes.
I, I, I happen to have more information about that, that perfect imprint, that is, that is what that item is above. That is the vendor for those items.
So it's like a sub-organization?
Yeah, I, that was an invoice that someone asked me about getting paid, so, yeah.
All right, any further discussion on the city events portion? Hearing nothing further, we're now at number eight, which is the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of a proposed budget amendment for fiscal year, you know it, to transfer $308,000 from general fund balance account to the following attorney fees accounts. Legal services, so there's various different account numbers, but one for $25,000, legal services, another legal services, specifically Giammarco Mullins, $110,000. Legal services prosecutions, Giammarco Mullins, $120,000. Legal services Michigan tax tribunal, Giammarco Mullins, $45,000. And legal services code enforcement, Giammarco Mullins, $8,000. Councilman Jane, oh, actually, I'll give the Florida administration for some rationale or what we know, and then Councilman James for the first question.
So as, as you know, counsel, the city of Pontiac no longer has an in-house legal department. All of our legal work is outsourced. Giammarco Mullins and Clark is our, is the firm that we use as our primary firm. And what you are looking at here, and, and looking at all of the sub, subcategories, is how we divide up the, the type of, of legal work that is done throughout the city. What, what we are asking for is we've saying, we are saying, the city has already overspent that budget item. And so we're not just asking for enough money to bring us even because we still have six months of time left. We're asking for enough money to bring us even and projected out to have money so that we finish out the, the end of the fiscal year with a balanced budget. So that we don't have to keep coming back in front of you for this.
Thank you, Mayor Grimald?
Well, and, and just to put a finer point on that, while Giammarco has historically, in recent years at least, been used as the primary law firm for the city, the city does utilize other law firms as well. And I don't believe there's anything in this budget amendment that says that this funding, this set aside budget amount has to be spent for Giammarco. It's to be spent for legal services, but that could be a number of other firms as well.
That is correct. It just happens to be that they are, because they are our primary firm, they're the ones whose name you see most frequently.
Thank you. Councilman James, you have the floor?
Yeah, I, I'm kind of confused with the three sets of GL accounts. The first one, I was under the impression that is the budgeted amount for the 2021, '22 calendar or fiscal year. And the second one, what went over, you know, that those costs went over in the amount of what's listed in the second columns. And then I'm not sure what's, what's going on with the third. So I heard Tim's comments, but I, I really don't understand what I'm looking at here.
So, when you say second column, I only have one column of numbers?
Well, when I say second, I mean, you've got. Well, when I say second, I mean, you've got GL account, it's the same categories, but you've got three sets of figures, of numbers. Okay, the first one, the under amendment?
Yes.
Yeah, you've got three different sets of numbers. So I'm assuming that the first is what was in the fiscal budget for 2021/22.
Point of clarity.
And the second was, the second set of budgeted numbers were what we went over? Is that what this is saying?
No, ma'am.
Because legal services, you've got legal services prosecutions at 120,000, and then in the second set, it says 250,000.
Correct. So what you're looking at in the first set is the budget. So in order to appropriately budget for the projected cost of legal services for the remainder of the fiscal year, we are requesting a budget amendment to the following accounts in the amounts listed. So you're adding...
The first that is what's being proposed to be added.
Added.
Yeah, but I can understand the councilwoman's confusion, because it is a little odd how the resolution is written and framed. The first group of numbers is identical to the third group of numbers. And so, my reading of the resolution is that there's some redundancy here.
Yes.
The first grouping of numbers, it says, is what we're asking the budget to be amended to.
The first group is what's going to be amended to?
That's right, as is the third group. So the first and the third group is the same, is my reading here. You're talking about the 25,000, 110,000, 120,000, 45,000, and 8,000. Those numbers are identical in both the first grouping and the third grouping, because the resolution states that we're seeking to amend the budget to that, and then restates at the end that we're seeking to amend the budget to that. So those are what we're asking and seeking for the budget to be amended to. The middle grouping, the second grouping, is what had previously been budgeted by the previous council. And so, in some instances, we're asking for those, not all instances, but in some instances, we're asking for those amounts to be increased based on excessive spending by the previous administration.
Okay. So if you will look at that, legal services, GMH, legal services prosecutions, legal services Michigan tax tribunal, legal services code enforcement, are all categories where we are asking to have the budget increased.
Yeah, and the reason why, and I think it's confusing as well, councilwoman, as I try to say, so I can understand why it's a little confusing. The reason is that the two pages in front of you that are in the board packet is a combined memo and resolution. So the first part of it is a memo that simply says what we're trying to amend the budget to. Then the resolution begins and says what the previous city council last calendar year budgeted. And then that resolution continues to say what we, in the form of the resolution, are seeking to amend the budget to. So the reason for the statement and restatement is, the first statement is part of the memo, the second restatement is part of the resolution. But really, those two documents should have been broken out separately for clarity, and that's our administration's fault.
That was a formatting error.
I do want to share that it is normal and healthy for a municipality to amend their budget throughout the year. In a healthy budgeting process, there may be multiple budget amendments, ideally done in sort of anticipated cycles. And so, it is, the fact that a budget has to be amended is not in and of itself problematic. What we're describing as problematic is sort of the flouting of that sort of communication understanding, and then a formal legally binding process that can make those adjustments. Because when we're dealing with a city of 61,000 and many pressing needs, and ideally growth and improvements, there will be modifications that we need to do, especially as you've seen in recent months, when grant funding comes in, we've got to not only receive it, we've got to reallocate it, say, "Okay, here's what it's gonna cover," and then, if that frees up other money, okay, here's where that new money's gonna go. So I just want to share that this, in healthier, more responsible times, we will also see budget amendments, but hopefully in a way that is constructive, well-communicated, deliberative, and preemptive. That ideally, we can do it sort of as we see what's coming around the bend versus many months, or, you know, some various months and payment cycles later. And it looks like the mayor wants to speak to it.
Well, it's very well said, Mr. President, and really, the executive branch should be, whenever possible, seeking budget amendments in advance to get authority and permission from city council before it spends money, to spend the money, as opposed to after the fact. Now, there may be times when that's not possible, because there was some sort of emergency expenditure or something. But generally speaking, that permission ought to be given in advance by city council. That's what a proper collaborative relationship between the executive branch and the legislative branch looks like. The other thing I'll note is, and it's, well, I think it's germane enough to this agenda item.
Go for it.
Is that, you know, we're just talking here about the current fiscal year. These are excessive spending, spending in excess of budgeted amounts for the current fiscal year, and that's the most urgent thing for us to identify and address, because that fiscal year continues. But the forensic audit will be looking at the full eight years that have gone by, and I'm sure that it will uncover spending irregularities, not just in the current fiscal year, but in the previous seven-plus fiscal years.
All right, we're on still the, essentially, the legal budget amendment. Goodman, Nicholson?
So the question that I have is, so the community is aware, what is the total increase that the administration is seeking from the budgeted amounts to the amendment amount? Just so I can make sure it's correct with the number that I have added up.
And while you're adding that, Nicholson, and then we'll come back to Goodman.
I know there are some people in the room who associate our current legal council with the previous mayor, wanted to ask, is there an RFP process in the future for legal services to address some of those concerns with the spending and how those citizens feel our services have been?
There is. So we obviously have had a lot of urgent things to deal with as a new administration, all of which are urgent, and all of which, if we had a magic wand away, we would be doing immediately. But these things obviously take time, and we have a finite number of staff hours. But yes, we are going to be going out very shortly with an RFP, and it's very important to us, as the executive branch, that we have a city attorney that represents the city as a whole, not the executive branch, not the mayor, but the city. And as a result, it's very important to us that that RFP process and that selection of a law firm or law firms be done jointly with city council, so that both city council, legislative branch, and the mayor, the executive branch, be confident and comfortable with the legal representation for the city as a whole. And in our view, it's unfortunate that wasn't done in recent years, but we think that it's important to do that moving forward. And so, yes, we are currently working up an RFP to send out, so that we can solicit responses and proposals from law firms, and then make a collective collaborative joint decision between city council and the mayor about the best legal representation for the city.
That we are increasing, or is that the total amount?
That should be the total increase. Whereas to fund this additional appropriations, $308,000 is transferred out of general fund balance to the account.
So, regardless of that, so back to my main point, why are we over budgeted? Is there any clarification for the community and the council as to why the amount that we budgeted for legal services is so over budgeted?
So, one example of that would be excessive use of the attorney's time, and when I say excessive, an example that I will give, you may have seen that the attorney was here earlier tonight when we were discussing the ordinance. He was specifically here in case the council had any actual legal questions about the ordinance. Once that item was done, we asked the attorney to leave, so that we would not be billed for further time. In the past, that wasn't the case. So that would be an example of why we're so far over budget.
Yes, that's one example. There are countless examples of the previous mayoral administration utilizing outside lawyers for a very wide range of services, some of which frankly did not require legal consultation, but were more routine policy matters. We believe that we should limit attorneys, the use of attorneys, who of course have legal expertise but are generally quite expensive. We believe that we should limit the city's use of lawyers to where it's absolutely necessary for legal advice, and we should try to restrict their use and avoid their use for routine policy matters. And so you'll see that, in general, we do not have city attorneys present at the city council meetings, because we don't want to run up bills for city attorneys unnecessarily. So at the vast majority of meetings that have occurred so far, we've specifically asked the city attorneys not to be here, because we don't want to be billed for time where it's not needed. And tonight, we specifically asked the attorneys to be present for the item about the rehab agreement, since they worked on that, but we also specifically asked them to leave immediately after that agenda item, so we would not continue to incur time expenses from it.
So, to sum it up, the increase in costs is due to irresponsibility on the previous administration's behalf in the overuse of legal counsel.
That's certainly one way to put it, yes.
Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor on this section of the motion? All right, we're at now, resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of a proposed budget amendment for fiscal year 21/22, to transfer $182,000 from youth recreation fund balance for that account to youth recreation fund services, building, and land rental. You had heard the mayor, when he provided an update on his youth recreation strategy, give some context to that at a previous meeting, but mayor administration, you have the floor for context.
Yeah, I know we talked about this previously, but the previous mayoral administration continued to rent the facility on Gulf Drive for purposes of a youth recreation center, even though there was no budget provided for that. And so, the previous administration incurred seven months of lease time at a cost to the city of $26,000 per month, for a total amount in excess of the budgeted amount by city council of a total of $182,000. One of the first things we did when we came into, and I would note, that not only did the city council, previous city council, not budget for that $182,000, but the previous city council actually passed a resolution specifically prohibiting the spending of money for that youth rec center, and the previous mayoral administration continued to spend money to the tune of $26,000 per month anyway. One of the first things that my administration did when we came into office was inform the owner of that facility that we were terminating the lease, and made sure that we were out of there by the end of January, which actually was no small feat, because there was an enormous amount of personal property belonging to the city that was being stored at that facility. So it took a lot of time just to move all of the city's possessions out of there. But we wanted to make sure that we did not incur a single month of expense beyond January, which had already been incurred, because we didn't come into office until January 4th. So we were already on the hook for January's payment anyway, and we wanted to make sure that we were not on the hook for February or any month beyond that. So that was one of our first orders of business.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Goodman, you have the floor.
So again, these three agenda items, it kind of comes back to a very similar point that I keep making. So again, as we are aware, the 10th council passed a resolution blatantly saying that the previous administration could not use these funds to pay for that building, correct? So what we are coming to again, with, again, everything that we've gone through so far, is that there's a plain and blatant disregard for the complete other branch that exists in this building. And again, we're seeing how this has manifested in one year, and this is again before the forensic audit. These are the things that we were able to look at, well, by we, the administration, to look at, compile, and find, and we are already at hundreds of thousands of dollars, just based off of very, very simple decisions of the previous administration to be like, "Yeah, cool, great, I do not care." And again, at this point, we have incurred so, so much money that has been not budgeted. So I just bring it to the community's awareness that this will probably not be the last time that we see things like this in the coming months, solely based out of, not of necessity, but out of just pure one unmitigated goal.
That is an accurate summary, yes.
Other council members that wish to have the floor? All right, so what we've got before us, and the speakers list having been exhausted, is the vote we're about to proceed with is authorizing the city clerk to publish those notices of these respective proposed budget amendments. So there will be some time for that to, you know, the legal process to adhere to the city charter to fulfill, and then it will come back for us to ultimately do the, you know, the final consideration of those budget amendments. So if there's no further discussion or questions, we're now at proceeding with roll call on the motion to approve those resolutions authorizing the city clerk. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Proceed away, clerk. With that, is there a motion to approve the resolution to authorize the city to enter into a temporary contract with National Career Group to support the reorganization of city departments?
I make the motion.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, so we have a motion before us. Administration, you have the floor.
Thank you. President McGinnis, the day-to-day functions of the previous administration were, in general, not well organized, I think is a understatement. And that's reflected in a variety of HR challenges that we face as we inherit systems that were put in place previously. Some of these include the fact that there are very few, if any, standard operating procedures in place for departments or personnel. Many, if not most, job descriptions have not been updated in many, many years. The previous mayor's administration specifically instructed some employees to do day-to-day activities and focus on day-to-day activities that had, in many cases, literally nothing to do with the person's job title or stated job duties or job responsibilities. And perhaps most alarming is the fact that the previous administration was paying a number of employees in amounts in excess of what was budgeted for those employees. We didn't bring that as a separate agenda item this evening, because that's ultimately going to require some budget amendments as well, but we didn't bring that as a separate agenda item this evening, because it's very challenging to know how to handle that when people have been paid, and frankly, continue to be paid for the time being, in excess of what was budgeted for them.
Mayor Grimald, if you'd like to occupy Councilman Parker's seat for the remainder of the meeting for continuity of microphone.
Thank you, Mr. President. So it's very challenging to handle situations where various city personnel were paid in excess of the amounts budgeted by the previous city council. In some situations, those personnel, those city employees weren't even aware that they were being paid in excess of the amount budgeted by the previous city council, because, as you might imagine, city employees don't typically, especially if they were hired since the last budget was passed, they don't typically pour over city council minutes and look at budgeted amounts. They assumed that what the previous mayoral administration offered to pay them was an authorized amount. So we have a lot of challenges when it comes to how human resources and personnel and employees have been structured and treated and dealt with, and it's very important that we get these things right, because at the end of the day, the most important... end of the day, the most important resource we as a community have, but we as city government have, is people. And we need to make sure that we're treating people with dignity and respect, but also that we're fully leveraging their talents to the benefit of city residents to make sure that we're improving city services. And the vast majority of what city government does all depends on city staff. And so our human resources are critical. It's critical that we structure the organizational structure of city hall appropriately and effectively and efficiently. It's critical that we have clear expectations of city employees in terms of their job titles and job duties and standard operating procedures. And unfortunately, very little of that has been in place. And we need to get this right, and we need to get it right quickly, particularly as some of these restructuring issues in terms of the organizational structure, in terms of either changing personnel as needed or changing positions as needed, will directly impact the upcoming fiscal year, the upcoming budget. And we need to present our mayoral proposal of the budget to city council no later than this May. And so we have a lot of work to do to make sure that we're making some decisions and proposals around human resource decisions in a very short timeframe so that we can build some of those decisions into our budget proposal that is due to city council by May. But also, and maybe even more importantly, we need to just make sure so that we can deliver city services appropriately, that we're getting our management of city employees right and doing it as quickly as possible so that we're providing efficient, effective city services to residents, which is what our residents deserve as much as the residents in any other community in Oakland County. And so it's with that in mind that we believe we need to bring on a competent, effective, human resources professional and consultant. And we have such a consultant in mind. Our proposal is that we immediately hire that consultant and her firm for a four-week period. And that'll give us time to do an RFP process so that for the remaining time period, maybe a couple of months after that, we at least have a competitive process. But we wanted to immediately hire this firm because we don't think we have time to wait for an RFP process. We have urgent HR needs and personnel decisions that need to be made. And we want to bring on what we believe and what we've identified as the best possible firm to manage that, pending an RFP process that will determine whether or not we keep the selected firm that we've identified or whether we might go in another direction. And without further to do, I'll allow Deputy Mayor Stevens to talk about the specific firm that we've identified and that we believe is the best firm for the task at hand.
So I am actually going to let the firm itself do most of the talking. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things that the mayor said. You know, out of all of the items that you've seen on the budget, on the agenda tonight, this is actually the one that brings me the most joy. Like, if you go back and watch the meeting, you will see that as the mayor, as we got to this item, my face lit up. And so my face lit up because I'm excited to say that what we have been doing over the course of this last 40 days is just making it. We have one full-time person in our human resources department. We have one additional person who is not a human resources individual, talking about what the mayor said about individuals working outside of their classification. So that gives you two people who are responsible for 107 active bodies, not including retirees to the city who call from time to time with issues. We don't have standard operating procedures. We don't have updated job descriptions. We don't, we don't, we don't. And so now we have the opportunity to say, not only do we want to bring someone in to immediately bridge the gap, we want to bring someone in who can help us say, okay, look, over the course of the next two to three months, not only am I going to help you bridge that temporary gap, I'm going to help you restructure, realign, get all of your job descriptions updated, get your compensation and wage study updated, get your mission statements for each individual department updated so that you are moving and you are aligned in the direction that you need to be so that you can provide the services that you want to provide. And so with that, National Career Group is the organization that we would like to enter into with. And we do have Ms. Nadia Sellers here, if she would like to come up and tell us a little bit more about you, because I'm so excited.
Okay, well, I've been here since 6:00. I don't even know how to address the council. Do I just say council? Okay, well.
What feels right?
Thank you for having me, all of you.
Ms. Johnson, could you help adjust the microphone so it's?
Thank you. I'm Ashley, the CEO of National Career Group. We are a firm that's located in Oak Mississauga. We have offices in Burbank, California, and Chicago. We are 300, associated strong in about 25 in-house professionals. And what we do is we help you save money. Human resources is the foundation of every house. You have talent, you have infrastructure, and you have equipment. But without talent, there's no need for equipment or infrastructure. That's what we do, and I'm hoping to do a great job for you to allow you to get your city moving forward and to save you money and to provide a blueprint of what your human resources department should look like, should function like, and then hire an HR director for you that can move that department forward.
Thank you. I want to give the floor to our subcommittee chair in finance and personnel. We have Councilman Nicholson with the floor.
Hi there. Full disclosure, I'm a senior professional in human resources and run my own consulting company as well. So this is kind of my sweet spot. I heard Deputy Mayor Stevens speak about, talking about wage studies. Is the wage study included in this one-month engagement?
So the short answer to that is, eh, obviously pieces of the wage study will be included and done. But the idea is that this one-month engagement is to really get us up to speed. Again, one person, we can barely keep the train on the tracks. This is to actually build out the capacity that we would need to actually be able to go forward and complete a full wage study. And I will say that Ms. Sellers is underselling herself in that there are a number of items that she's already helped us with just in our back-and-forth conversation. And to date, she, we owe her nothing.
Great. Thank you for that. Yeah, I've seen some of your preliminary work, and to me, it looks great.
Let me ask you a question, though. You asked if the wage study is included. Believe it or not, I think you have a system that can allow us to pull out the wage study. So my firm is based on a lean approach. I keep my company lean so we can stay in business. So if there's something that I can provide for the city during the time that I'm here, absolutely, you will get it.
Thank you. Thanks. So the system in which you're referencing, is there more?
Placidity. You have a placidity system. I'm not sure if it was integrated with your last system. We will be looking into that.
Okay, great. Yeah, one other thing, just, I mean, because we're both here, and for the sake of, budget is budget, right? The fact that we went over some of these, in salaries for some of these roles, is, you know, is wrong. However, when I look at what the actual salaries that were offered, as full disclosure, I want to be very clear, in my opinion, in my experience, those dollar amounts are not obscene dollar amounts. I know it was not done in a way that was appropriate, but for somebody of, and especially knowing some of the people who have filled these roles, to the extent in their experience vis-à-vis what we're looking for someone to do, from my knowledge in each one of these roles, those amounts are probably market or slightly below market. I, you know, in the past, having some of these RFPs that were put out for staffing services, my firm decided not to apply because these dollar amounts were way too low, and it would not have been feasible for us to find a candidate that would have been qualified. So I just want to lay that line on there, is that we may see some of these numbers come back after a wage study is done, and we would be in line with what was decided to pay some of these folks. So I don't want to incite immediate action. I'm hoping that some of these findings will be in line with what, where we currently are at.
Deputy Mayor.
And if I may, Councilman, that was exactly the reason, as the mayor alluded to, that we did not bring forth any budget amendments dealing specifically with personnel. We wanted to have this firm onboard to help us through that because we believe that you're actually probably right about that. But again, the fact of the matter is, it's not just, oops, we overspent. It is, we blatantly just did something. Instead of coming to council and saying, these numbers need to be changed, this is why, it was just, we're just going to do it.
The 107, too, that's noted in the resolution, is not just W-2ed employees. It also includes contractors, correct?
So actually, that does not include contractors. That includes court workers.
Court.
So we actually handle the courts, yes.
Do you know what that breakdown would be if it was just city barring not the court? So we can be clear. Because I've heard, I like for people to know, full disclosure, how many W-2ed employees the city actually has currently?
Ballpark, it's, I want to say it's 60/40.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Goodman? Councilman James?
I'd like to say I fully support Resolution 10. I think it's a great move, getting us started in the direction that we know we have to go. And so I think everything here is perfectly in order, perfectly needed, and I support it 100%.
I feel the urgency that we should actually proceed with voting on this this evening. I think that council would feel comfortable with that. But it is your call. I just want to share for the community's reference, the two action items that this motion calls for. It's that the Pontiac City Council authorizes the mayor to enter into a temporary contract with the National Career Group for a period not to exceed one month and a cost not to exceed $16,000 to assist with reorganizing the city of Pontiac HR department and also reorganizing city departments in general. And for the resolve, that the city will issue an RFP, or request for proposals, for services to include not only those listed above, but also recruitment, onboarding, and other HR-associated needs, the results of which are to be brought before council for action by the time that the temporary contract with National Career Group ends. So that's sort of really what the action is before us, and the motion before us. Any further discussion?
I want to explain, just in case we do get to a vote. I'll be voting no as the, if it gets there. As the chair of that commission, I would have liked to see the RFP details rather than just a contract coming forward, unless no one else applied for an RFP.
Well, we didn't do an RFP for the temporary contract. In terms, because we didn't think we had time to go out and